...of the agenda?
Oh, I have a motion.
Is there any given? All in favor? I have a motion carried. Do I have an approval of the consent agenda?
You will want to review the newest bills in front of you.
Like everything came in, huh?
Yeah, finally this morning. The ones with the X beside them are the ones that came in today.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion carried.
The power sink a lot higher than what it was.
Actually, no, it's actually a little less per kilowatt hour than last month, but our usage, the overall usage in town was quite high this month again, so yeah, that's why it's here.
Dave Sturm, you have your call.
All right. I think I know most everybody here. I don't know if I've heard much of you, Linda. My name's Dave Sturm. I'm a Snyder's Association Engineer down in Atlantic, but we've worked with Nancy on this for a couple of months now. I put together just a potential street project for you guys if you want a big one. She thought like that might be your guys' next priority coming up. What I did was just pick a three-block section, and this is actually, I believe it's First Street, out by the elevators there in town with a cost estimate of three blocks. I can talk to you a little bit about that.
Wanting for Jerry and I?
I do. What this includes basically is a complete tear-off, redo of your streets, ripping them completely out, starting over, doing concrete curving gutter and concrete surfacing all the way through. I took a section from 71 out through the street, three blocks worth. Cost estimate came out to $230,000, and then we always add a little contingency because we never know until we actually design it where one of these are going to be, but come up to basically $4 million for three blocks, so you're running $80,000 a block to do a complete reconstruction. So I don't know if that's a number you guys ever realized or not, but...
No, that's terrible.
Yes.
Do they need curving gutter in a small town?
Do you need it? No, you don't ever need it, but that's just whenever you do a reconstruct, that's the way we do it on most paving machines anymore, are equipped with curving gutter right on them. They slip for them, the whole thing in one pass.
Wow. What kind of problems is that gonna cause us?
Yeah, curving gutter.
As far as drainage?
Yeah.
Most of the drains are in everybody's yards.
It would be better. It would be basically all your ditches you have now get filled in, and all the front yard drains goes on the street with new curving takes. I got storm sewer maps from Nancy even a while back. You have storm sewer all the way along this road. I got some of what kind of shape it's in, what size it is, but hoping to reuse that. I mean, if it drains what's there now, so that'd be something we'd like to possibly televise before we ever move forward with something like that. I know it's sticker shock, isn't it?
Yeah. Terrible.
About ten or three blocks.
Yeah, and it's only three.
How many linear blocks we say we had?
Like forty-three? Yeah, if you did your old town, it's about three million blocks. Yeah. And speaking of paying for it, there's not a lot of options. That's the street work, there's not many grants. There's federal DOT money, but those are only for eligible routes. Highway 71, 175, you don't have to care for those anyway. Those are the only eligible routes you have in town. So everything else is a local street, you have to fund it yourself. And that means Geo bonds or whatever alternative you have.
Any of the streets are they available? Would they be, could we just put an overlay of asphalt on some of the streets that are good?
Yep, we could do a mill and an overlay, because right now they get kind of built up. The more overlays you do, the higher they get. If you milled it off, did an overlay that cut the cost out significantly.
And there, I'm sure First Street is the worst street, isn't it?
That was one that we had just talked about. She thought it was a priority in town.
Well, in front of the elevator, it's broke.
Yeah, it's always been a bad street.
The thing about First Street, you know, with the elevator, the traffic that that gives, asphalt's never going to hold up like you've got the new concrete street. You can overlay it, in five years it'll be cracked up again.
So you bring back those two aisles?
This is seven-inch thick.
This is seven-inch concrete, is what we do. That's the standard anymore, so...
Oh, that's what you were doing, this one?
Yeah, at least on that one. Your other roads, you know, the one past the water tower that basically it's one lane, that doesn't need to be rebuilt. You guys are the council, you've got to make these decisions.
So maybe the one, the most important one that gets the most use can have concrete, and then possibly get an overlay.
Absolutely. And we just chose that one that gets all the truck traffic, the grain, and you know what semi has, $80,000, plus I suppose people are bringing wagons and grain carts, and all that's on one ax on a grain cart, and that's, well, it's legal because of farmers, but it wasn't farm equipment, it's not legal.
So what's the average cost of an overlay, a mill and an overlay?
A mill and an overlay, we usually get about half this, about $40,000 a block, forty to forty-five.
Twenty thousand.
Yeah. Again, I don't know the local economy as well as I do down in Atlantic. We have an asphalt company right near Atlantic, pending some construction, I don't know if you're familiar with them. Up here, you guys have lockup services that are...
They're a bunch of asphalt.
Yeah, we got a bunch of asphalt. Little lean's not around anymore, are they? They run a Carol.
Has somebody else bought them out?
Somebody else bought them out.
Is Lauderdale still around in Madison?
Lauderdale's still around.
Did they in Madison? You said no, but did somebody else, a family member buy them out?
I don't think they do asphalt work, do they?
Okay, because that's what they're in Lauderdale here.
And seal code is probably something you guys have done in the past. That doesn't add...
I don't like that.
That doesn't add any strength to your roads.
No.
It just seals it.
It's just a waste of money.
I don't recommend that to anybody. I agree, I think it's a, it seals up your cracks, but that's it.
Yeah.
Cracks will be back next year, in two years. Something to stew over, think about? See, if you want to do two blocks, you can do two blocks, one block. I just know that three blocks is pretty common. I mean, if you do one block, you're going to pay a lot in mobilization. The contractor can be a bit high just to get his equipment here, if he's coming to town for one block.
Yes, you can find somebody in the area, and that's what you try, is the best bet. They're close and...
Godvers and Smith is a favor. They're out of growth. Ten point on Madison, but I think you put in Carol. Hydrants Construction, are they still around?
Yeah.
Got Hydrants, yeah.
They run a Carol or they go wherever they need to. They'll do your parking lots and your hospitals, stuff like that.
So you think of all the streets that you looked at, most of them, are they resurfaceable with the milling and the...
Yeah, I think so. You'll get...
Because they've lasted this long, you think...
You don't begin to watch truck traffic in town, except for right to here with the elevator. You'll get highways, but you don't have to maintain those, so, overstate.
I watch truck traffic down where it goes all the way up Spruce Street.
Yeah, maybe they loop all the way through, I don't know. Maybe they loop all the way?
Yeah, they go back to 175 of us.
Maybe you want to buy off a six watch, I mean, now it was.
Yeah.
If you want, I'll help with it.
So would you recommend an inch or a two-inch?
Overlay?
Overlay, three-inch overlay.
It's what we usually refer to now.
But you mill off, what, two?
A little more, because they're getting crowned pretty good right now. And what we do is the city saves the millings, and I don't know if you use them for your alleys. They work.
Hey, they work great for packing.
They do, they pack in tight.
Especially I got that behind the post office, and that's awesome stuff.
A lot of cities will keep millings, use them in their alleys, because when they get hot, like today, they'll stick together and re-bond.
Yeah, you have a path right in your hole.
It's not as good as a new street, but it's great for alleys. What are your thoughts? Any ideas? You want to go any farther? Do you want it to end here?
I don't know if our struggle is financial, I think, Dave. Is this something we can tiff?
Do you have any tip money?
We have no, no tiff anything.
You have no urban renewal districts or anything?
We have an urban renewal district.
Okay, yes. For instance, tip, I don't know if you're familiar with that, taxing on housing.
I think that's a good idea.
It's where the Renzi shop, that new building that went up, I can't think of, was it...
Jim.
Jim built that new shop. If he was in your urban renewal district, what you can do is do a project and create a debt for the city. You borrow the money for it, and then you secure, you certify that debt through the state, through your bonding attorney, they do this whole process. And as once that debt's on the books, you can capture the new taxes produced by that building and keep all of it. See, right now, if you don't capture it, if they get the increase in value, you know, it was a value at one point, say it was 500, now it's 5,000, that $4,500 increase gets split up between school, county, and you guys, the city. If you certify some debt, you can capture all of it, all of $4,500, as long as it's going to pay off that bond for that project. You've got to have quite a few improvements in the increase in tax value to have to make tips for that.
So we are, to do a street project, just an overlay of a project, not going to create that valuation difference?
I don't think, you have to, you have to, that's the only new building I can think of right now. Does the elevator have any plans for expansion that you can...
I would doubt it.
You don't really know a new elevator, that creates quite a bit of taxes. They're doing that in Atlantic right now, in River County. They did a tip, paved their road off the elevator, they built a couple million dollars worth of new bins, and making a session of all that value. Taxes just off of them new bins, paying for the pavement of that road. So I don't think you guys have quite enough increase in value, unless you have some prospect that's, that's how tip works anyway, so. Works on residential developments too, you know, if you get three, four new houses built.
Say if we end up developing the picked property up here, then we might be able to do some tip.
If you extended water, sewer, and street, you can capture the taxes, all the taxes for the new houses to pay for that extension of those utilities on the street, so. Probably won't work in this case, but it's an idea.
One of the other things we talked about is if we went with some kind of a general obligation bond. Talk to these guys about what you would recommend as a payback for a street project, because our sewer bond, you know, we, they all know we bonded that out 40 years. What do you recommend on a street project if you were to...
Most of the time, we see, see street bonds go up in 10 to 15 years, and that's simply because 10 to 15 years, you might have to do it again. You just, you never know.
At least past the 20 to 30 years.
Right, right, but we're only doing, we're only doing a few blocks.
Yeah.
You know, in five years, you might want to do a few more, or however you guys want to approach this, but. And I don't know the condition of your water mains. I mean, do you know where they in good shape? The sewer in good shape? Okay. That's something...
They must have been while, because they were all done, one's in late 70s and the other one.
I think you said the water was in the 80s maybe?
Yeah.
So you should be in good shape there. Oh, it was that late?
Yeah.
Your sewer maybe, maybe what you're going to do with a three-block stretch, televise and see if it's in good shape, and televising your mains cheap. Just to make sure you don't want to tear up your street. Two years later, you're...
Spend that kind of money for three blocks, we could pay more for town, and they just spared you the last.
Yes, you can.
Except there won't be a street there if we leave that.
No, I know. It's bad. I know it's bad. I saw big holes in it when they turn around.
There's always the dirty word of special assessment. I don't know if you're familiar with that, where you assess just people who live on the street. That gets thrown out once in a while, and that does not go over well.
Yeah.
It's not popular, but it's an option.
Well, yeah, there's not a lot of long, that's really, I mean...
Well, they all pay their portion of share. You know, the elevator would have to pay for...
A lot.
A lot. And that's, that's a dirty word in most communities, and I don't do it very often, but we do do it.
Like you did it.
Like you's going to on the next one, we're doing that one, so.
They did it last time too, because...
On this port out?
No, they, they did it on that one street that goes right uptown.
Downtown?
Yeah, not downtown. I know where Bud's live, Marvin.
Oh, on the southwest corner there?
Well, when they go up right up to like the post office and Julie.
Oh, did they, they assess that?
Yeah, they did that years ago.
Yeah, that was, I didn't do that.
It was custodian over there. You were in school probably then. Sorry, but I know they talked about that they, they were assessed, they had to pay for their curving gutters.
Yes.
Only you did it to them. They got through it.
We also do street inventory studies. We've done them for like $1,900 for towns of this size, where we'll check every single year street, give you a record, cost estimate on every single street if you want to do that, or if you guys know your street's better and you just want to pick some. If you don't want to do any right now, maybe in years it's not costing you anything, so.
We can't put it, we can't put it off. We got to...
That's the problem, if you log me away to where's the...
Yeah. You guys decide on something in the next couple of months. Any other suggestions?
Dig deep.
Dig deep and catch more?
USDA financed the street project for us this year. It's the first one we've ever had, because they just don't finance street projects, because it's not a priority. Infrastructure is, water, stuff like that, but they did one this year. We've never seen it before, so.
What were the circumstances of that situation that maybe would have encouraged them to do that?
The town's low moderate income was way low. It's a southwest Iowa town, community dying. They have zero money. Your guys' LMI is probably not that bad.
No.
So if you had, if you're not, if you don't meet that threshold, they won't even look at you.
Yeah, our LMI is not that.
They had a high, very poor town. That's the only one we've ever seen.
You went to do the fire station, our LMI was too high to qualify for any grants.
Just for that, so you won't, that option's probably way out. I mean, it doesn't hurt to try, but you know, to be getting something. Low, moderate income.
Okay. Yeah, I know certain percentage. Because your government keeps track of that with the census and all the...
I think you have to have 40% LMI.
And I think we'd also have to do a community survey.
You have to be community-wide, yeah.
Yeah, you have to do a community survey, and you have to have a certain percentage of response and...
In certain towns, you can just do the district you're doing the work in, because some districts are poorer than others, and some towns, your town's too small, you would have to...
We are a one district.
You're a one district, we would have to do the whole town. And I, like I said, I just beg you're not at that 40% low moderate income. Suggestions? You want me to do anything further? You want me to go home with my tail between my legs?
I'll just bring your checkbook here.
So our advice is we can do a street inventory study for you if you want to do that. Look at every street in town. Maybe this isn't the best option to start.
I think it is.
I figure it's in bad need of it, but money-wise, didn't have to get a lot more done.
Jerry, what do you think? Streets, the worst ones?
I don't think it is. There's another thing. I thought up there, you've got to turn off. I mean, they can't mill around it.
In the streets? Yeah.
Curved socks, tubs.
Water valves.
Oh, you're...
Yeah, I've got that in here. I've got adjustments of fixtures as one of my items, because they got to mill around them, and then they got to hand dig them out, raise them up or down to grade.
Yeah, I do remember that.
Fixer adjustment.
When they did it right.
Reducting labels.
Thirteen to fourteen.
Do we really have any sidewalks down that street?
I, I looked on an aerial photo, and I think I saw a couple coming in.
Nobody walks a sidewalk.
No.
Yeah, well, on Elm Street.
I walked out.
Yeah, I think I saw them on the aerial photo.
You tried Elm Street there.
And when, when you do a reconstruct like this, you're required by law to put ADA curb ramps in. That's, I don't know if you have any in town yet, that's the little bumps? Oh, you've got them under downtown. Those little detectable warnings they call, you're required to put them in if you do a reconstruction project. They're not terribly expensive, because you don't have very many. I think that's the item. Number 10, detectable warning.
He's got a speed bump?
That's in the sidewalk, and curb ramps down the street, the little bumps.
Got it.
Those are called detectable warnings. Those are for the, the blind people who can't see the difference in contrast, so the bumps, they can see the contrast and feel what they can tell. That's why I have them in there. I don't know what the others, this is completely a guess, you know, based on what I can take off aerial photos, just right on the street. We have that in our survey, and then anything else.
So you mentioned that you would do like a, a survey of all of our streets and make a recommendation?
Yep, we can do those reports for you.
And you, I wrote down that you would charge, your company would charge $1,900?
That's what we did the last one for, for a community of this size. We've done three or four of them last year.
Okay.
Maybe we did one for Elkhorn, one for Avoca.
And then that survey, then, you would identify...
It lists your priorities. We'll list every single street in there. What we do is we rate them 0 to 100, their condition, and based on truck traffic, their existing condition. There's a bunch of other factors that go into that, and we rate them on priorities, so. Your top priority is...
In order of priorities.
Right, if you guys already know that, don't worry about it.
Right.
Save the $1,900. I mean, it's, but if you want to have some documentation, if people come calling and knocking and say, "Why are they doing that street, not my street?", that's a lot of reasons why it's not living, just so they have all the engineer's sense, so they can blame it on us.
Well, and, and this maybe is a dumb question. Are there issues with streets that you would discover, uncover through your survey that maybe are not apparent to those of us walking or driving around?
Probably not. The only thing we could, we look at is service. We don't take core samples or anything like that. We just do service investigation. I mean, we have more experience, but that's all we have, is experience to go by. We can look at the cracking and see if you have, you know, some subgrades, subgrade issues or not, so. But there's no question.
You know that every sewer line, every water line, those blocks, street is sinking?
In your streets? Yeah, the old trenches, you can see the little...
Yeah, some are already, they're already sunk.
And, you know, you hope that that's done? It's been long enough that that should be done, so.
You never sunk nothing until the last three years.
Oh, really?
Really sunk it. Oh, yeah, it was never there.
So that, you know, if that's over the sewer main, that makes me think you could have a crack in your sewer that floods some soil in?
Yeah, but you got that, three-block line.
No, usually not, unless you have joints leaking. When they put the sewer in, is it clay tile or is it PVC?
I have no idea.
No, I think it's PVC.
Was it PVC, then you shouldn't have those issues.
I was around, it mustn't have been tile. I could ask Larry, but he would know.
Because those clay tile joints can separate, and every joint, back in the day when they did those, was every four feet, so you could have sink, if they were all separated, but if it's PVC, you should be...
I think, I've looked down at every street, I can tell where the sewer line is, every water line.
Yeah.
The last two years, we have some less moisture. I think it's soaked, dirt and all that stuff, and it just...
So maybe it's just the moisture and no cracked tile?
I'm not, I'm not going to go there.
Yeah, the only way to know if it's cracked tile is to televise it. It's not your, whoopin' water line's not cracked, and that'd be shooting out of the ground, that'd be next.
I mean, you go down with the crack, or I mean, actually, there's a law on water, you fill every, anything you want to cross, you fill. It's the last few years, it's empty some.
And an overlay doesn't take, take care of that. A reconstruct, we do, we do a subgrade prep, where they disband 12 inches, after they get pavement out, break back, so. But an overlay's not. We just come in, mill, and overlay it up, so. If there's something that's solving in there. Want to chew on?
Well, we asked for it, we got it. You know, you maybe, you should, maybe, I hate to spend the money to check it out when we know our street's bad. I don't know. You'd spend the $1,900? Yeah. I don't know. That would be foolish, huh? What are you all doing at $1,900 besides just check out and rate them?
Then we just give you a report with costs, priorities for the entire street system, all your streets. Possible things of failure, what's causing it.
I wonder how much that would cost if we had somebody look at those sewer lines, Jerry? Somebody go down and run a TV?
Televising the lines?
Yeah.
It'd cost them more to get them here than, unless you're just doing one line, but you're in your hometown.
Maybe the only one that are sinking, I don't know.
I don't know how. We've got a local guy in Atlantic, I think he's, he's cheap. He's, he works for the sewer department, but he runs on camera, so he, anytime we need him calling up, he just doesn't, sends us a $300 bill for his days when the water is. But that's for us. I don't know if he would do that for another town or not. I mean, if you want me to get you a price to do that, I can certainly do that. I can certainly get a price from a company that does that. He doesn't have the fancy equipment, so I don't think he hires out two other municipalities, but we work with several companies that do. I can give quotes for it, if you want to know. What it would cost to do your system?
We're just talking, yeah.
It doesn't hurt.
Yeah.
No. Well, I, I guess I'm trying to think ahead as far as, you know, if we do one block and overlay, we're going to have to borrow some money.
Yes.
So maybe we need to know what our priorities are, so that we can contact the bond attorney and start talking about doing a general obligation bond, which will require a vote of the temple to approve.
Yep.
And it's a lot easier to get people to say, "Yeah, I think we should do this", if you guys know why you're authorizing to have it done. It's another step that costs a little bit of money, but in the long run, it looks a lot better than just subjective, "Well, we don't like the looks of this street, we're going to do this one, this one, and this one." Just something for you to think about. But if we're going to trying to bond for any major amount of work...
We're going to have to have everything checked out if we do a bond, is that what you're saying?
Well, we're going to be able to justify it to voters, and us sitting in this room trying to decide what's the priority is not justification to the voters.
Yeah, Cindy, we do the street, we do your house, and what people are going to say.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just the way it is.
Patriotism.
Well, and that also gives you guys...
Luckily, we're spread out all over town, we're not on one block.
But, you know, but that gives you guys then a justification as to why that block got done, but another one didn't. I, just something to think about, but I, I think if we start going into a bonding situation with the bond attorney, we're going to need to have our ducks in a row and...
And if you, if you're going to go through that route, you don't do one block. That's not cost effective at all.
No.
Not to bring the trucks into town.
No, bring the trucks, even your bonding costs in one block aren't going to be worth that at all.
No.
Yeah, it's just...
They don't, at least.
Yeah, Lord knows what that's going to cost us.
Maybe that's what you want to, maybe you want to do seven, eight-block overlay, I don't know, instead of a three-block reconstruct.
But that's what I was wondering here, if we did more of, of, more of the town.
I think people would be a lot more in favor of doing something like that in front of houses rather than...
I do too.
Basically fixing up in front of the elevator. I mean, I think you have a better shot at getting a bond passed. If there is a shot, I mean, it's going to be tough.
What do you have on the capacity?
About $330,000.
Do you have any, any that you use right now?
No.
Oh, so I don't...
We have no debt.
Oh, well, you're better than most cities.
Yeah.
I usually don't hear that.
Yeah. We have no debt. We have no revenue debt, we have no debt, so...
Yeah, you guys have got a unique opportunity with your street skating that's donor, I mean, that's, I don't ever see that. You just did a million dollar street skate, and you have no debt.
Awesome.
Contrary to us, it's clear.
Yeah, we're very fortunate. Maybe we should have...
I think that, I think what you're talking there is probably better.
Yeah. Maybe we should have him look into it, and then maybe see what, what it would cost to bring somebody in to do the sewer cap.
Especially with that, a mill and overlay is not going to do us a bit of justice over
justice over here, is it? I mean, it's...
Yeah, it's gonna look nice for a few years.
But it's gonna go right back.
Yeah, it's gonna get beaten right back to where it is.
Even if it overlay heavier, I mean...
Yeah, maybe it'll help, heavier helps, I mean, but I always use the example, they don't build bridges out of asphalt.
Right.
It's a flexible pavement, it moves with the ground, with the heat, it...
Which, you know, I'm trying to think when that was done, it lasted quite a long time.
Right.
Well, they had a new, they put a new, uh...
On local streets, looks great. And if you're not concerned about curb and gutter, and you just want a nice driving surface?
I know when they did that...
Maybe that's the route we need to take.
What do you call the under, they put a, they built a...
Substructure.
Yeah.
Hook onto the street, subgrade?
Yeah, they did that, when it did that, that street, because that was always a problem, yeah.
Now, we wouldn't save any money on that street if we just took the asphalt up and redid the subgrade and put asphalt back on top.
No, no. If you're going, if you're going that, if you're going that far, the cost of asphalt and concrete, that thick is pretty similar.
Yeah.
If you're going a complete reconstruct, we always run them in concrete.
Yeah.
An overlay is...
So how long would you think concrete would last on that type of a street? Would it be well worth it?
Oh, we'll get thirty, forty years on it, easily. I mean, but, again...
Yeah, but at that time, it's, it's good.
Well, as long as T. and Tyler's gonna be there for...
And if you ask for...
Hey, I'm telling you, remember your bond in the community!
Do we want to stick our money in there?
And then, then they leave.
If five years the business shuts down, I mean, I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but if...
Which economy, yeah, if you don't go, they might...
Two hundred fifty dollar project, and then the business is gone. Thank you too.
Yeah, it would.
So what I'm hearing now, is they would like Dave to go ahead and pursue the whole town and give us, and then put on what our priorities is.
Do you guys, you think you would like that, to have the report done?
I would.
I think we have a better chance of getting something done that way, rather than a three block.
And then, and I think...
Well, so you want us to do the street study, right? The nineteen hundred dollar street study? Land analyze every block in town, give you the report, okay?
No, we don't understand.
And then see, can do anything, should check into the calls for sewer, if you find anybody, or Nancy, do you have any idea, or...
Let's get this part done, and then as we start to do our work...
You'll, you'll come and give us a quote.
I'll make some phone calls. I'll beat you to some numbers, I, I've got your maps, I can estimate, put on your foot of the sewer you have.
Okay.
And I'll call up couple three, we work with all the time.
Just remember that if we start looking down there and we find bricks and other stuff, then you guys, we gotta go take care of it.
I know.
If you don't know what's there, you don't have to take care of it.
Ignorance sometimes is bliss.
What I tell you, if we do the street...
Right, you know what...
Well, but if we do the streets, we're a year from that, Cindy, so...
Yeah, I know, but...
Yes, before we do any work, yes, I think that's very, a very good idea to do that. But, I'm not sure that it's something we need to do right now.
But I'll beat you a number, just so you have a ballpark figured. Next year, if you do it next year, it won't change that much, for some, right, you know, maybe a little more, but, I'll just give you a number...
We just work on, just have an idea to base it on, of what we need to do. Well, yeah, would you, okay, would have motion, that have Dave pursue for the nineteen hundred? I'll make a motion to have Dave pursue the study for nineteen hundred dollars. Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Call in David? Hi, motion carried.
Okay, we'll be going on that. Any other questions for me?
Oh, we're gonna have a lot more here tonight, Dave.
Oh, yeah. Drop off my card, I've got my cell phone number on it.
How long do you think it'd take to get that study? I mean, is that a...
No, I'll try to get it...
Couple month deal, or?
If I can't get it by next month, I'll have it via by September. So, but I'll be able to answer you when I want to keep it on the agenda, so. No later than September. And if I, yeah, I can't get to it for a couple weeks yet, but it's on the radar.
Okay.
Need any more copies of this?
Yeah, mine, mine, if I got two copies of that.
I'll, I'll take one from me and I'll leave. There you go, there's two right there, so...
Thank you for your time.
You bet.
Thanks for the answers.
I'll be in touch.
Geez, you got, you got more work to do and you got, your dad got more help this afternoon. How cool is that?
I hope he got finished, though, I have to leave. I might have to go back, I hope he got it done, so. See you guys, thank you.
Bye.
Next item, energy efficiency, uh, rebate, rebate program request, we don't have any...
Nope, I have none there. Just on the street, back to the street, guys. We've taken a step. At least now we have to feel a little better that we've stepped off the curb and we're actually starting something.
Yeah, I feel better.
Instead of sitting here going, "We gotta do something" and nobody knows what to do, we've taken a step, so feel a little better about that, please. Um, I have no update on the EECVG because the Office of Energy Independence, for whatever, rearranged all their employees and, I don't, I can't even get ahold of anybody down there right now, so we'll have to work on that in the next couple of weeks. Um, the other thing I have is the change of light program. I think this is our third or fourth year participating in the change of light program. Um, I just got a new billing this last week because the, I'll try to explain this to you right. We got a report as to how many bulbs our customers use, but we hadn't had to pay for that service because our customers use retailers that give them a discount at the cash register, rather than make them fill out a rebate form. So, our total cost for this program was about two hundred and eighty dollars this year. That bill just came to us last week and was in the list of bills for approval, so it was, we had a hundred and sixty bulbs purchased, and I've got a whole report, it went into our energy efficiency report. It was a significant savings to, towards our energy efficiency goals. This program was very significant for our city, city goals, so I would hope for the cost of it, that this one's cheap enough that we would continue doing this one. We basically let them handle it and pay the bill and put a couple articles in the newsletter, and that's our involvement in it, so.
Counsel, continue with that. Yeah, that's a good deal. Okay, motion, any motion to, to lift the contract?
I'll make a motion to continue the change of life participation.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Okay, here's the next big one, and there's no real decision to be made tonight. We've talked about our energy costs, our electric costs, that just keep ramping and ramping and ramping, and they are out of our control. I think at this point, they are out of the REC's control. We are now two and a half years from needing a renewed power supply contract. So, basically tonight, I just wanted to talk to you about what you felt our direction needs to be. I've made an inquiry with another, um, electric cooperative, and it's not a rural electric cooperative, there are several, um, electric cooperatives that are municipals that cooperate together to buy their power. There's Wymecca, and it's not Western Iowa, it's something else. There's SiMecca, which is Western, Southern Iowa Municipal Electric Cooperative Association. There's Nimecca, which is Northern Iowa. We would fall into Nimecca's territory, I think, but I am going to make an inquiry there to see if, one, if those associations, any of them would be allowing new membership, because I'm not so sure that it's not time for Auburn with our little more than half megawatt annual capacity usage to join together with others to purchase power. Um, I've got, I wanna make an inquiry there, unless you guys don't think that's a good idea to make an inquiry. I also think it's time to start looking at power supply consultants. So, I know, thank...
It sounds expensive.
It's, it's gonna be scary expensive.
It's terrible what they charge.
I think nine or ten years ago, when, when you, the Auburn went through that, they spent thirty or forty thousand dollars.
Whoa!
You're kidding!
No, we did, for a couple...
Holy cow! So, yeah, I'm kinda maybe giving you guys the StereShock information, Janelle was with us at that point. I wasn't even here at that point when we went through that process. But, those are, those are some of the things. Now, I, I wanna know from you what you want to, my direction to be when it comes to trying to find a consultant?
I guess one of my questions, if, if you did something like that Nimecca, did, would they then do like our services and stuff, like when we had the ice storm and such, is that...
I don't know the answer to that, Justin, because I haven't had a chance to talk to the guy.
Like sack REC does and all that, or...
I think all of the municipals have their own agreements with whoever they need to have a contract.
Subcontractors.
Right. I do know that Greta went with an energy company, the acronym is MEAN, but Stack County, or Raccoon Valley REC is doing their maintenance contract.
I see.
Because MEAN didn't have the capacity to service those big things.
Who's MEAN?
I can't tell you, I can't tell you, it's the acronym and I can't, Missouri Energy, Missouri Nebraska Energy, it's...
Rock, uh...
Pardon?
Rock, uh...
Yeah, it, or they're mid Nebraska, I don't know, it's MEAN. But they would be a bidder for our power supply, um, they wouldn't, we wouldn't use them as consulting. So I guess, back to the consultant question is, do you want ME to contact consultants? Do you want to go through a request for proposal? Do you want to go through, do you want to have them come and visit with you? Do you want to just hire someone based on what they're gonna charge you per hour? Which way are we gonna be more informed? I don't know. There aren't a lot of these guys out there, um, Diane Luca said three, they gave me two names, she gave me the one they worked with, and then one she also knew had worked with some people. The guy that we used the last time is no longer in business. He's retired and sold off his consulting business to another guy, so, um, we really agree with you.
And there's no way of getting around this.
I'm not smart enough to negotiate with these power companies.
Oh, I wouldn't be either. We can't do, we can't do it on our own.
There's no way we can just renew or...
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
And say the half of it?
Yep, we can do that.
Put our rates higher.
But they're gonna stab us, but...
Well, and, see, here's the other thing that, that this, and I don't wanna, I don't want to, I guess, say bad things about this consultant, but what this consultant did was allow you guys to sign a power contract that allowed the rate to go up a hundred and thirty percent before the contract was void.
Allow you to...
Yeah, he let you guys sign a power contract that allowed Corn Belt to charge whatever they wanted to charge for the WAPA transmission. Well, and maybe those controls aren't possible in our contract, but we gotta ask for that.
Yeah, we are just...
I mean, if we're gonna sign a ten-year contract, we have to be able to have some kind of control on rate increases. And maybe we're gonna learn through the process that we can't do that.
So the only way to do that is to hire a consultant.
I, yeah, but, now, if you guys want me to get the guy from the REC up here, from Corn Belt and the REC to come talk to you about the possibility of extending this contract and putting some controls in it, we could start there if you want.
They'll just walk right over us.
No, I don't think so, not if they're coming just to consult, you know, to visit with us.
It might be a starting point, to see, at least get a gathering of what possibly could happen if you stay a little or not. Because if, if that's possible, I'd love Bill saying that thirty, forty thousand dollars on the consultant, like, if we could put a cap on it.
So maybe we should start with asking Jim Bagley with the REC to bring somebody from Corn Belt, let them come talk to you guys, either next meeting or this September meeting.
I would say between them and Mid-America.
But Mid-America isn't charging us personally, right?
Right.
That's all done, they charge Corn Belt, right? They took, that's their problem.
Right, the...
But if we could get, well, it's hard.
See, we can't sign contracts...
Get Mid-America, if you would, yeah?
Actually, yeah, I, I, but, listen, you have a consultant that's apples to apples in there.
Right, there you go, that, yeah. You talked yourself right out of that one.
No.
But...
It's a tough call.
But this is, this is a really tough decision, guys, it's a really tough issue.
Well, it's handled our citizens from the past.
Yeah, it has.
I mean, it's been a surprise every month.
Well, and it's, I mean, the power bill from the REC today was eight point four cents. The REC bill last month was eight point eight cents.
That's wholesale.
Yeah, supposedly.
And my dad pays twenty cents, seven cents a kilowatt. That's ridiculous.
Now, they aren't paying, our customers aren't, that isn't the total cost to our customers because we have the WAPA power, which is about three and a half cents. So that offsets...
Well, it's about what they're paying.
Yeah, it does.
You know, that...
And see, we're, you as a customer in Auburn are paying more because the city has to put on our share of money now. And seriously, guys, the only thing making money in this town's our electricity.
And then on the town.
Yeah.
It's the only thing we have to help out.
That's right. So, should, if you want, I'll ask Jim and Corn Belt representative to come talk to you next, first.
I would like to hear what they have to say.
Give them a chance. Tell them it's, you know, coming something good.
Yeah, absolutely, get present us with something that we can compare apples to apples, for future questions, for something next person.
Impossible.
Okay.
Well, half the problem is, you know, the right work that's, base changes here between now and...
Yep, right.
When we gotta go into this.
Could be twice before we start that.
Yeah, you're right.
Right. So, that's why I, I just kinda worked this over, I've been working on this in my head for a long time, and I finally decided it was time to bring you guys into it, so that we started, I think we just gotta take our time and work through this process and get as educated about the electric industry as we possibly can.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I don't even, and we can get some help from the IAMU when it comes to qualifications for a consultant. Ann will be able to help us with some of that.
They have somebody that they could refer to us with?
She'll have a list, or, but, but the thing is, we have to know what we want that consultant to do, and that's where I'm...
Find it cheap and put a cap on it.
And reliable, cheap, reliable...
Cheap, reliable, and a cap.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Three criteria.
Okay, that's what I need tonight, thank you. That, that's good direction, that's a good place to start, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, do I listen to that, have them pull shockers?
It's gonna get easier, I promise.
People hauler sale, do we want to keep our people hauler, which is our little trailer that takes people around town, or do we wanna sell it?
Well, it's...
Centennial?
If anyone to buy it?
Yes, I've had a gentleman call, and I don't have a, a number offer, what he really wanted was to borrow it, and I said, "Uh-uh, our live building, no." And so then, he was very adamant that they really wanted to borrow it for the Fourth of July, and it was, he called after our council meeting, and I just said, "Mm-mm." But, they, they wanna buy it, I don't know what he wants to give for it, I, I didn't even go there because I didn't know what you guys thought about it.
City property doesn't have to be opened up again?
No. No. We would want to let people know that we would, we were considering a sale of it, but, no, I don't, it's not a high dollar thing, no, I don't think so. We've always used bids before because we had something to sell that we didn't think we had anybody interested in.
We have to give them some, some chance, is that...
I, I think it'd be fair.
Yeah, if you guys really wanna sell it...
Is it something we can buy, like a news, in the newsletter, put in there?
Yeah.
Would you want a chance at it, bring a bid on?
Yeah.
It was one of his highest bid picks.
We tried to use it last year, they called first, and it was called the insurance company, and it found out that it had to be pulled with city equipment and city employee, or city people, um, supervising it, so, I mean, really, is it worth keeping? So, I mean, really, is it worth keeping?
No, I, that's what I said, we could just put it up for sale. Me, I don't care.
I would, I would never seen a huge, okay, it's...
It might be a media that, but now, got that information, it's like, yeah, why should you care about it?
Well, yeah, I was just trying to lay back there.
And we're going to, if we sell it, it's as is.
Oh, absolutely.
Yep, no payers, no...
Or put your tires on it or nothing, just going like that.
Well, it wasn't put in the newsletter, my check was there.
And then, nobody wants it and let that die?
That was the clock, that was the point.
How's the guy knowing he might have been in?
Right.
He asked up his bid for the office meeting, yeah? And the highest bid will get it. Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay, the next item is moving ordinances, does everyone have a chance to review them? Do we want to pursue it or leave our current ordinance as is? Is there anything in there, I didn't read all of it, is there anything in there on brush? If they need that stuff around our leaves or anything like that?
Yeah, I think there is, that if we were to write some kind of an ordinance like this, it would allow us to go in and clean that up too. Or, yeah, we probably want to do that. Personally, we don't have a manpower, we got yards. But... And if we do that, we'll never collect the money. So, well, this is just a waste of time, I think so.
But, yet, it doesn't hurt to change the ordinance, so at least we have backup if we need it.
Most of the problems, places are basically abandoned, places.
One is, and one the couple's just lazier. And I did speak to him about it last week and he promised he'd get it taken care of.
So, well, see, because the one place I can make up, I mean, you can assess all you want, tax and future, obviously, but...
Exactly, exactly. And so, you know, and once you, if, once you start that, where the city goes in and cleans it up and assesses it to the taxes and it still doesn't get mowed next month and you got it, then you've bought a problem that you can't get reimbursed for.
You can't get rid of it.
Yeah, exactly. I just don't know that we have a huge issue yet. If we had a really bad situation, and this house over in the city's neighborhood could become a bad situation.
Yeah, I have a doubt. I guess the only thing we can do is...
I'm sorry, I can't tell what?
So, yeah, we do, we got one house that gets bad, breaks this old house out there with that.
That gets old.
Like I said, that one, you're not going to...
And we're not going to see any money because I can't even figure out who owns it, not a cone.
I heard, looks like they're sale.
It's, well, they...
Well, Fargo was, had the utilities turned on, it was paying the utility bill, which we shut off the utilities today, as well as Fargo put in it. When the limb came down in the backyard and took the power line down, I called the person down there and said, here's what, she says, we don't own it anymore, we turned it over to Hunt. Do you like contact there? So, I don't know. So, going in and mowing it, it just becomes an expense for our residents.
Yeah.
It's not worth our time. I might think you've been involved. But that's about all we know.
I've seen a former family member over there time with you.
Really? Huh, that's interesting.
But just to try to say a little place in the thing.
Well, and, you know, maybe with some of these properties, rather than changing ordinance that we can't enforce or don't really want to enforce, we can just do with a letter from the city that says, get this taken care of.
Please, please reconsider.
Instead of dealing our best. It's not a huge problem that we have.
If it was a bigger problem...
It does. When you drive through our town compared to some of these other small towns, it's going wild.
That was 99, 100.
I'm spoiled because I drive to some of these towns, I go, no, don't.
That's what I'm saying, it's just, yeah.
But I think our people are doing a good job, so...
Well, that's it, though, your thing is, if the people's back, you know, the guy did say nothing, the stuff kind of get grabbing, but once this town kind of set a little bit, the time will, time will, you know, but it did, it did make a difference, like, yeah.
Right. All righty.
More is the subject, it's not less than most.
Yeah. I put something together, it's in front of you, what I'm going to speak from is in front of you, as well as a treasure and re, the form that I usually give you. I just thought maybe it was worthwhile to take just a few minutes and look at our finances after the end of the year. We began our fiscal 2011 with a little over $248,000 cash and CDs. We ended the year with a little over $285,000. We did this year to what I report to you about at the Library and Trust account. Because of the audit, you guys already know this, but we added a local option sales tax fund, a pointy benefit, benefits fund, emergency fund, and the Library and Trust Fund. The sewer bond sinking fund and the reserve fund and the sewer bond will, while we established them for last year, those are going to go away because that's taken care of.
Oh, they're going away.
We no longer have to have a sinking fund because we paid that money. We're going to repay that amount to the electric utility, but we don't need a fund to set those monies aside for that. It's no longer a requirement.
So, we don't want to put it in a reserve fund?
If you want me to, but it's just a paper transfer every month. We talked about that when we did the resolution and you told me no at that point. We just do an annual transfer. Our general fund budgeted revenues were $278,157. $200,000 of that was a specific budget line item for the term it is signed. That did not happen. Therefore, our budgeted revenues were 62% less than anticipated. However, when you take out the project budget, our revenues were 25% more than we had planned. A lot of that was ice storm associated reimbursement, the expenses for the ice storm were actually in fiscal 2010 and a large share of the reimbursements were in fiscal 2011. So that's just one of those things that's going to happen. Revenue from all sources, $618,089.40. Expenses, $588,834.28. A net increase in cash of $29,255.12. I thought it was very cool this year that all of our general fund departments did a great job and no one exceeded their budget. I thought that was very awesome. Our electric fund was able to add $25,000 to their reserves and able to loan a little over $47,000 to the sewer fund, which paid off the bond. That bond was paid in June, I have not seen the bonds yet, but that's, we don't know that they won't come for another number so yet. I did note in here, while the electric fund is holding steady, we have large expenditures, which we already talked about with the power supply contract. Electric fund revenues were 17% over budget and expenses were 11% under budget, that's pretty much what allowed us to have some extra funds there. I don't need to read every word of this. Our big problem, guys, is our water fund. Big problem. We were able to reduce our deficit in the water fund to about $14,000 until we had to replace the brine tank, which was okay with the budget, that looked pretty good until the well pump. The well pump cost was a little over $13,000. The insurance claim reimbursement is 50/50, it could go either way at this point. The well pump company would not sign an affidavit being definitive that it was late. But, he said it, he felt it was power surge and the insurance company's going, if I can get him to state this, you probably have some coverage. So they're working on it, I, I don't know today where it's going to be. If we happen to get some reimbursement for that cost, our water fund is not quite so far out the window, but at this point, we are $10,000 over budget in repairs to the water fund already. Yeah. The previous tax fund, there, we increased our available balance by about $6,900. We had a little lower than normal snow removal costs and of course, we didn't get any work completed. The sewer fund is just pretty much at break even. Our expenses were less than budgeted, however, just like our water sales, our revenue in the sewer fund were less than budgeted as well. That's one of those places where we need to stay diligent with watching that fund, but pending any major repair or major work, that fund seems to be doing okay. Our garbage and recycling fund is strictly break even. Care is strictly break even. If our landfill fees increase any more than they have, we're going to have to look at that. While we're on garbage and recycling, just so you know, I'm sure you've all heard, we've had some complaints on the green bags not being big enough. And whatever happened in the manufacturing process, they're not big enough. And the company is replacing 63 cases of these and they should be here in the next couple of weeks, so they're going to ship us 63 more cases and take back the others. So, anyway. Projects completed in fiscal...
I wondered about that because those green ones kept falling into my trash can, I figured I had too big a trash can.
You know, we sold those for two years and never had a problem and suddenly...
I figured it's my trash can?
Nope, nope.
That's good to know.
Your trash can didn't change over time, did it?
No, no, but...
How big are the green ones?
They're the 11 or 13 gallon, or 11 gallon, whatever.
They should fit that, yeah, okay, that's right, okay.
They're supposed to be 24 inches wide and they're 21 and a half inches wide, they don't go on.
I just saw that in my trash.
And they're a dollar a bag, 50 cents.
So, anyway. Projects completed in 2011. The historical museum got their entrance done and the wall between the rec committee and the historical museum, and I think they got it open. We completed a financial audit and we got the lighting in this building retrofitted. We're not used to this level of inactivity around here. Projects authorized for the next year, the property development study, the renovation of the community building, and the brine tank replacement. That one is now completed, so it's done, yeah, that one is done. Needed focus in, we've talked about most of these tonight already, street repair, electric rate study, power supply contract, we have to continue with our energy efficiency grant. And I think we need to start working on our water system, whether we work on some way to control costs, some additional way to control costs, or if we start looking for additional way to generate revenue. I know that one of the things in that area that we haven't looked at is meter replacements. Water meters slow down as they get old and we haven't replaced old meters in a long time, so it's something we just, just stuff to think about, so that's, I, requires no action. Any questions about anything that I went through?
No, but this is awesome. Keep doing this.
Yeah.
I like this.
Okay?
Yeah, keep doing it.
This is stuff I do all the time and for whatever reason, I had more time this summer, basically because we're doing less, but I had time to, to say, I'm going to put this on paper for council, so... And I didn't read every word of it, there's more in there for you to, to look at and I made a copy of the end of the year revenue and expenditures, so you can see that. You know, I, while, while it doesn't look on paper like we got a lot of things done, we have a lot of big things on our plate coming up and I think we just need to take the baby steps we need to take to keep, to keep going, so...
An ice storm, it took its toll.
Yeah, ice storm.
Oh, we got it all back.
Yeah, but, and we went through, you know, as a, as a council goes, we went through a pretty rough patch, but I think we've all learned and grown and we're, you know, I put a lot of big stuff in front of you tonight, so I think we're ready to go and... Well, yeah, Justin's popping gray hair from here, I can tell.
It's going to be fun.
It's not going to be fun, but we have big problems to tackle and quite honestly, that's why you guys do like to tackle.
It's important stuff to take care of.
It is, it is.
Public forum open?
Public forum?
Public.
Public works.
That much, just wait for the, here, you know, the... Is that in the future?
Yes.
Tomorrow. Is that be five or eight or something?
And then after that, after Wednesday, it's getting hotter again.
96, 98. Oh, I might get up. We're working on that, picking up branches, seeing if that's going to be able to wait. Before we get around here and see more things, we're going to have to print out. Nothing much, I heard training, not personal, a little branch of a box, it's better than stopping off here, I think so.
I know it's not for you to do, Jerry, but there is one hanging over here in front of the telephone. You really want to work that hard?
It don't take long.
No, it's not our property, but I know that there's a limb there that's got to come down, so...
It's just, like I said, they're not, you know, where it's gotten broken, they're not maintaining the tree and the city's not responsible for that. You just go along, sign all the directions, you know, later, it's not going to happen.
Anything else, Jerry? Thank you. And thank you for using your own trailer to pick up all these tree limbs and everything through town.
It makes the, you know, going up and down, take a truck, going up and down, picking up new food, so it'd be...
Yeah, made it easier for you. Hey Nancy?
Community building work is scheduled to begin Monday, week from today. They're going to begin by, with the countertops and refinishing the cabinets. So, anybody that wants to come help clean the cupboards out, I'll take some help. That has to happen. And we have to move the senior citizens, we're going to pack them up Friday and move them to the Presbyterian Church by the morning, so hopefully they're not up there for more than two weeks, that's the point. I already talked to you about the Gerd Beach bags. The Iowa League of Cities Conference in September. Two questions, who needs to go, who wants to go?
I think Mike should accept the award, he's had so much involvement with the project. And Nancy? Want to back party?
Oh.
And Nancy, because he's had involvement from the very beginning, starting with the park, and he's helped give Nancy the heads up to start this other project, so I think the two of them should accept it. And it costs $45, so I think...
We get two tickets, but anybody beyond that is $45.
So it might suck.
It's a school day and a bus driving day for him, so I don't know.
Right, that's why we need to ask him now. What's it fall on Thursday?
Yes, it's a Thursday.
Last day of bidding for council and mayor seats.
Yeah, you have to turn your nomination papers in that day as well.
She's going to have to do some arranging to keep this open till 5:00 and get down there.
But I do have Plan B worked out, so...
Yes, good.
Yeah, the one, the one time every two years the City Clerk's office is required by law to be open until 5:00 is the day they scheduled this stupid thing. And they should have known. I addressed it with them as well because it's like, come on, people. Anyway, it's a small problem, but it's fixed. And I don't have to, I'll work on this and if it changes any, we'll talk about it next meeting, but they're asking these questions, so... Okay, that's it for me.
Justin?
Yes.
You looking too bored?
Not a thing.
Well, you have a meeting coming up.
Do I? Yeah. She's supposed to be here tonight.
Next Tuesday.
Okay. I figured this, that's pretty good, I'd notice this time.
Well, I put it on my calendar. I haven't seen any meetings.
I'm going to get it till Monday night.
Yeah. I haven't seen any meeting though, but you put it in the 19th, I think it is.
Isn't it next?
Yeah.
Celebration committee. Anything from the fire department, Justin, you need to...
The only thing that they talked about in the last meeting was our antique truck. They were wondering, the only reason I thought it was pretty easy, if the city wants to fix that up or not, with the brakes being out on it and basically being not really one of our trucks. City's truck.
Yeah, that one is the city's truck.
Yeah. The brakes are shot in. The city wanted to have the expense of getting it fixed back up.
I think it's been put on hold until after the road committee.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Back from the road committee. We get streets fixed.
That was all you had from there, I think.
We don't want to let it get ruined or anything like that, but...
Well, that's even a chance. We've always, the city's chef, for how many years? I don't use...
Rec committee. Maybe that should be brought up for the rates next year.
Right. Maybe I'll take that. See if the city wants it over there.
Nancy, put an ad in the paper for the 14-inch mouth valve. So far, we've only got one team. I don't know. Call them, so... Have some more, maybe the firemen want to do a team.
They talked about it, we'll have to read the ones that I don't know.
And so working on BJ's for a team.
What did you say, it's five men? I guess it was...
No, it's five girls.
Five girls and whatever.
Whatever, forgot it. Yeah. It has to be 10 minimum. Well, we've been talking to people. One of the teams that we thought we had ended up going to storm light, applying. I think we're going to end up getting it going until we launch that one team. Just keep passing more. We have to start it a week later, we will. I think once we start playing and people see it and, you know, the mixture will be a lot easier. Library board. Have you heard anything, Nancy?
Nope. Um, yes, I have to. The historical committee has applied for a Renzi grant to do some more renovation work.
That's right.
So we'll see what happens later. I think the library applied for a Renzi grant too, but I don't know what they were asking for money for, so...
I spent quite a bit of time helping Jerry with the historical one. I think on the sheriff's department, anything from the council?
Yeah, it's in there.
So is it? Oh, it's in there. So we get it by email.
Haven't been sending it that way because most of the time there's nothing in it.
Oh.
It's always just having, if it's there, do you want to look at it?
Or is it horse goes from town, leaving?
Really?
What's that problem?
I don't know. Pettenhauser's probably.
I don't know. I haven't thought maybe...
Could be Gerstes?
No.
Would it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't we?
No, I thought...
Pettenhauser's?
Was it Pettenhauser for sure?
Yeah, because...
Was he being there 10 minutes ago?
Yeah.
Where was it at, that patch over here?
Yeah.
Oh, running sideways. Oh, you're kidding, right here? I thought maybe it could have been worse out there too.
No.
When that cop came in to BJ's and wanted to know...
Those horses would never make it this long. There's enough grass up here.
That's right. They just put their head down and eat.
They're starving. What time of day was that? It was about nine, eight o'clock at night. I don't know, between eight and nine. Deputy came in to BJ's and asked if anybody knew who it could be.
Oh, he's giving him, telling Merrill's Pettenhauser. Those are his horses out there, so okay. I had to call him. I've got his cell phone. I called him two or three times last time. Let me say, there's a horse out by the highway. It's knocked. The horses are out. He's got one likes to lean over the fence.
All righty. Anything else from the council? I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
It's bad in it. Want a favor?
I...
Motion carried. I have...